Public hearing for our taper report. In front of you, you've got the presentation up on the board and then also some highlights in a little packet. And so we'll start with the PowerPoint presentation. Just a reminder that the taper is the Texas Academic Performance Report. And this is achievement data reflective of last school year, the 2022-2023 school year. The PowerPoint presentation is broken into sections. So slide three will begin the achievement reports. And that's going to consist of the next 26 slides, which will include all of our performances based on subject at the reading, for reading, math, for social studies and science, including all of our EOCs. And the data is broken down by approaches grade level and meets grade level. And so you have all of that information. It's also broken down by our sub pops. And then after the achievement data, you will see, starting on slide 20, the data is now broken down at a cumulative level, looking at reading across all grade spans, at the approaches and meets level, and then again for all the other subjects. So looking at science, looking at math, cumulative wise at all the levels. Starting at slide 30. Yep?
We don't have any.
Okay, so we will start on slide four. You will see our star. Grade three through eight percent at approaches or above. That's the reading approaches. Slide five is the reading performance at meets or above. So you are going to see a reduction from approaches to meets, as that is a higher standard for the students to meet. Slide six is our EOC English approaches grade level and above. Slide seven is EOC English meets grade level or above. Starting on slide eight, you're going to see mathematics, grades three through eight at approaches or above. Slide nine, mathematics at meets or above. You'll see our EOC algebra one at approaches or above. And then slide 11 is our EOC algebra one at meets or above. Slide 12 brings us to three through eight, science performance, which is just our fifth grade and our eighth grade approaches or above. Slide 13 is the meets or above for science. Slide 14 is our EOC biology approaches or above. Slide 15 is our biology EOC meets and above. Slide 16, we go into social studies approaches and above. That is just our eighth grade. Slide 17 is our eighth grade meets and above. And then you'll see on slide 18, our EOC US history approaches and above. Slide 19 is the meets and above. Okay, so now on slide 20, you're going to see the cumulative. And this is where we're looking at our data cumulative compared to the state, the region and the district. So if you see right there, you'll see the state in the light blue, region in brown, and dark blue is us here at Huffman. And this is basically our star percent across all grades, all subjects approaches. Slide 21 is the same parameters but for meets and above. Slide 22 is looking at reading, again, same parameters, but just reading all grade levels approaches. Slide 23 is the meets grade level. Slide 24, we're doing the same but for mathematics at approaches or above. Bless you. Slide 25 is our meets and above for mathematics. When we get to slide 26, we're in the science at approaches and above. Slide 27 is the meets and above for science. Slide 28, social studies approaches and above. And rounding out our achievement reports are slide 29. It's the meets and above for social studies. So the taper has various components. The next component we're going to talk about is the attendance, graduation and dropout reports. And that's going to be the next four slides. So starting with slide 31, we've got our attendance rate. And so on this chart, you'll see the state, you'll see the region and district, same colors. And then the rest of the sub pops are reflective of our sub populations in Huffman ISD. So that's our attendance rate. Slide 32 is our dropout rate, and we want that number to be as low as possible. Slide 33 is our annual dropout rate, grades nine through 12 for last year. And remember, this is a lagging indicator, so it's from the previous year's data. And then on slide 34, you're going to see our four-year longitudinal graduation rate. And that's just for our district, no comparison to the region or state there. The next section of the taper is our college career and military readiness. And some of the parameters on here have changed moving into this next year of accountability. And we'll be presenting more information as the year progresses on that. But on slide 36, you'll see our college career ready rates. And you'll see our all in that first column, the comparison with the state and the region in the far right two columns. Slide 37 is from our class of 2022, our college ready graduates. So these were the students that met those requirements. Again, in the far right corner, you'll see the comparison for state and region. Slide 38, you're going to see our military ready or career ready graduates from 2022. Slide 39 looks at our average SAT score for all subjects. The first column is us as a district as a whole. The last two columns on the right are the state and the region comparisons. And then slide 40 is going to have your average ACT score, all subjects, again for the 2022 class. The last few slides are just the ethnic distribution and our demographic information that they just basically take from our PMS reports and all of our enrollment. So you'll see our distribution of our ethnic groups on slide 41. On slide 42, you'll see our comparison of our sub populations of economic disadvantage compared to the state, our English language learners, our students with disciplinary placements, and that's from that 21-22 year, and then our at-risk student population. Slides, slide 43 is our teacher demographics, our ethnic distribution. And then slide 44 is our teacher years of experience. Slide 45 has the enrollment of our programs, bilingual ESL compared to the state, gifted and talented enrollment, and then special education. Slide 46 and 47 include information on our violent and criminal incidents. And it, the slide 47 has the trajectory of 2020 data, 2021, and then 22, 23 school year. So those are all the graphs. On this next packet, that's a lot of data. So I went through and I pulled out some pieces that I wanted to talk about today with you all. The first thing I wanted to mention were some considerations as we're looking at this taper data. It is reflective of last year's star and EOCs. And last year, there was an overhaul on the state assessment. And so this was our first time taking the star 2.0 and the new format. Some of the things to consider with that new format is that the reading test changed. It's reading and writing together for the first time, starting in third grade. So students in third grade and up all had to do an extended constructed response, which they've never really had to do before. And then they also had short constructed responses, which were like open-ended questions that they've never had to do. It was our first time taking it on the computer, so the online format was new for them as well. And then it's also the merging of the writing test and the reading test together. So they had the reading passages that they normally would take. They also had their editing and revising, and it was all combined into one test. The other thing to take into consideration is across all content areas, we had the new question types. And so we had students who had to select multiple answers on a question. They had to do the short and extended constructed responses. They had to do multi-part questions, questions that were weighted more than others. These were all new features and all new things that we were actually just planning for something. We didn't really know what it was going to look like. We were given a percentage of the minimum number of what the star 2.0 can consist of on the test, but we didn't really know what it was going to look like. So the teachers really did a very good job on trying to plan for something that they really hadn't had many resources to plan for. On the next page, you'll see the glows. So I've extracted the areas that I want to make sure we highlight from that data. In that first row, you'll see attendance, chronic absenteeism and graduation rates and our average SAT scores. These were all glows, and glows are defined for this purpose as where we have exceeded the region and the state. So those were glows across the district. And then under each and every subject area, I pulled out things that would represent a glow. In reading, language arts, our EOC English one, our approaches and meets level exceeded the state. Our EOC English two, our approaches and meets level exceeded the state, as well as our students who are economically disadvantaged. And then our special education students in third grade exceeded the state performance. You'll see in math, our eighth grade, across the board, approaches, meets and masters, and our emergent bilingual students exceeded the state. You'll see the same in science, our fifth grade approaches, our EOC biology approaches, meets and masters, and our emergent bilinguals. So these were the pockets where we have exceeded the state and the region performance. On the next page, you'll see our opportunities. These were areas where we did not necessarily meet that mark. And these are areas that we are really trying to focus in this year as we focus on achievement. So these I like to call opportunities. They're broken into three categories, achievement, of course, areas that we need to look at specific to our sub populations, and then lastly, just other indicators that may be included in this report that we didn't quite hit the mark on. So in achievement, reading, language arts, grades three through eight. Pretty much across the board, we really need to do, we didn't hit the mark we were, we were shooting for. In math, it kind of, it's three and four, and then grades six and seven. And so we've got a little bit of intermittent pieces going there. And so we, we're going to have to dig in a little deeper at the cohort, like of the kids of cohorts, to really make sure we can close in some of those gaps. Social studies, grade eight for achievement was another area. Our sub populations, you know, we had our special education performances not hit our mark in our emergent bilinguals. But another thing that was kind of surprising was our Hispanic students, because we do have Hispanic students who are not emergent bilinguals, meaning they're not identified as English language learners. And their performance was actually the lowest across all of them. And so we've really got to dig in and find out what's going on there to make sure that if there is an unidentified language barrier, that we're working to fill that gap for those students. And in the last column, our college career military readiness. In the new threshold, with the new accountability system, we, we have some work that we're going to have to do to really close that gap now that they've gone from the 60 to the 80. And so they've raised the bar across the state as to what is considered a good performance in that area. And so taking into consideration that change, that is definitely an opportunity for us to grow. And then looking at our AP examination, the participation rates are not where we want them to be. And then subsequently, then the results aren't going to be there as far as the percentage of students obtaining the minimum score. Any questions? So on the last page, I've got district responses. This is not new information to us. It's just the state has now officially decided to release the taper reports. We've been looking at this data since the summer and planning accordingly. So we know that our professional learning communities needed some protocol and structure on how we revamp, how we focus on achievement. And so we do data digs that focus on achievement. We're constantly shooting for our A or our B in domain one. And that's looking at 80% of our students meeting the minimum standard and really pushing kids across the threshold. So our teachers do reality checks after every big assessment. And so it's all coming to light, and it all makes sense now as to why we're, we have this shifted focus. We've also focused with content and design PLCs, where we have days that we actually design assessments. And we're constantly looking at how are we bridging this to what it's going to look like on the real thing. We take our district learning assessments, our DLAs, and so we've made sure to incorporate those new question types, knowing what they actually look like now that we've seen a released test. We've been incorporating training for teachers on writing across the content. And actually recently just shared out the new Huffman way of writing. It's, it's a new way of writing. It's not the way we used to, the five finger paragraphs like we used to do. And, and so we're having to adjust accordingly. Really making sure that we're backwards designing, look, starting with the end in mind and working our way back. And then just really focusing on how we can intervene for our students and provide them the resources they need in order to fill those gaps and get them as close to grade level and exceeding grade level expectations as soon as we can.
So I've got a question. So the, like, the star results weren't what we would hope. The, but I don't, I don't recall. So I would ask that we get that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that we can kind of dive in.
Yes.
But the, but in terms of EOCs and graduation and, you know, the kids being able to, if we're not seeing the star performance, but we are seeing them move to the next grade level. Like, I want to make sure, are they knowing what they need to know to move on? Or is it, are we in limbo? Like, how?
So last year's a really hard year for someone to definitively say yes or no, because they were planning for an assessment that no one knew what it was going to look like. And so not even the people who make the resources knew what it was going to look like. So you really didn't see a lot of resources out there outside of the one opportunity we have, which is called an interim exam that the state puts out. But you really can't do much with it. Like, you can't print it, you can't use it. You just, the kids take it and it gives you a predictor. This year, we know, now we know, we've seen a released test. We know that if we build in opportunities for students to write, to discuss through their responses, that they're going to be much more apt to do well on this assessment. So to answer your question, I wouldn't base it off of last year. Our teachers are constantly working. Some of those kids actually, it's surprising to see that they maybe didn't perform as well as they would normally do, given the, the fact that the assessment was just so new. And this is across the state. It's not just a Huffman ISD thing. A lot of people experienced the dip because of the change in assessment and change in standards, just change in modality.
Did, did we see big changes in terms of the differences between where we scored versus the state or the region?
No, and in that PowerPoint, I will send that. I'll make sure you guys have that. And then we can even include last year's report if you wanted to go across. No, and we actually fared pretty well when we, when you went to the region and state level. Not where we want to be, because we want to be outperforming across the board. And that's where our goal is set now, is like, we've got to make sure we're outperforming the state across every sub pop, across every course, across every grade level. But we fared well in comparison to the state and the region.
Y'all can include last?
Absolutely, yep. It's a lot of data.
I'll just give some context.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Are, are there, with us having had, going through a test now, are there also new tools, like, available now that maybe we didn't have? Or is that stuff having to be developed in-house?
Yeah, no, it's not in-house. Actually, we recently went through HMH, for example, for reading across grades three through eight. When we decided we were going to use that as like our main resource for teaching, it was on purpose, because there's a lot of built-in responses for students, writing for students. It's structured around the new way that we're doing, you know, reading. In math, we're using STEM scopes for math. We're using science, STEM scopes for science. Those parameters that we've set this year around lesson planning and how we're designing assessments are all in response to this now that we know. Now that we know what it needs to look like. DLAs are including more of those open-ended answer questions. Teachers are having to calibrate with each other how they rank and how they rate the extended responses now that we know.
One more other, are the, are the test changes phased? In other words, is it alive? Is there going to be more? Or is it, or what we saw last year should be what it's going to look like this year?
Should, when you're dealing with TEA, should is, but definitely, it's, it's, we've seen it now, and now we know. Now we know what it'll look like. We know what the kids felt, what their reactions were. Now we know, and so we're not waiting, we didn't wait for this taper report to be sent out. We started in the summer planning for how we're going to respond.
So know that this is pretty old.
Yeah.
You said, y'all have been working with this for a long time. With that being said, is that we, we, we know we want to, you know, make some improvement in some areas. Is there any way, then, looking at Joel too, like, can we get those DLA datas? Can we get data when y'all do the interim, interim test?
Yep.
So it's like, we do this, and then we kind of don't hear anything else until we do it again the next year. And I would be nice to track some of that progress.
All of the DLA results?
Yeah, the ones that, yeah, the ones that help, I mean, because this, I feel like, last year it was a little bit too, where we were under, under the state and the, and the region.
Yeah.
I feel like we, everybody was, for a couple of years, like, that's COVID, we're dealing with it. We're, we're out of that now. Like, we're all in the same boat, totally get, we cannot compare apples to apples of like 22 tests to this one. But we want to be, we want, we want to do better than the state and the district.
Absolutely.
I mean, the state and the, and the, and our region. So it's just, like, I would like to see that we're making that progress.
Yeah, so we actually had our principals meeting today. And we have slated for the week, right before our February break, we're actually going to do a step back where we're taking our first two of DLA data, and then we'll have our interim data, it'll be fresh. And we're going to create, like, this is where we're at. This is what we need to do for the remaining five weeks before the next break to really dig deep. So I'll have that data for the February board meeting to have the DLA one, DLA two, middle of year. We'll have the middle of year data. I know we've been anxious to want to present that to you guys, because it looks really good for the M-class initiative that we're doing.
Yeah, or even, I mean, even the Friday report, or, I mean, on the balance scorecard, because we've got probably, not all of these. We've got a, we've got a handful of these as the focus areas on that balance scorecard.
Yep, absolutely.
I don't remember, when do we come up with that one again? Next month, okay, good. So that kind of fits into that to see how we're, how we're doing.
Yeah, absolutely.
So yeah, if we have, if we have that in the next week and then during the ELC time, if anybody has other questions, we'll take that time to digest that and make an answer.
Awesome, will do. So last year's data with this year's bar graphs. And then we'll have DLA one, two, anything, our interim data, and then some of our MOI data that we'll have as well. Awesome, perfect. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gray.
Chapter 551. So tell you what, let's rise. Mr. Dutton, if you'll lead us in prayer, and then we'll do our pledges.
Heavenly Father, we come to you now thanking you for the blessings of this day. Father, for the privilege we have to be here tonight to represent this community, do the business of this district. We pray for your blessing upon this meeting, that all we do be pleasing in your sight. Father, we offer up a special prayer for this week with the weather and everything that's going on, just a, just a little more safety, a hedge of protection around our bus drivers and all those getting the kiddos back and forth, keep everyone safe. We lift all these things up to you, asking your precious and holy name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, one state, one individual.
All right, looks like we've got one public comment tonight. Mr. Paget, if you'd like to come on up. The way it'll work, do you mind keeping time? The way it'll work, you have five minutes to talk. Mr. Warren will let you know when you get down to about a minute. We're able to listen to everything, it's not the agenda, so we can't respond directly, but we can hear everything that you've got to say. Sure.
Okay.
I'm here for my son's birthday. 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 Probably 10,000 people probably miss my son. SOS and just got to take suicide and death. While you're waiting. That know the death of this pain. If they agree that unfortunately in my life, this is the end of life. It belongs to me. I have something that I hope to know what I feel about. Nobody ever knows. Um. Um, please understand I'm not technically not here for my castle. I will forever be his advocate where his sons was. But I am here tonight while he's a teacher and a teacher's husband. I thank anybody here, administration, educators, people walk through the hall and the cafeteria. Then come there and look and see the kids die, the problems. It doesn't take long. When the school defeated, baby and child, they don't help. They don't know that it's children's health. What we do, we put baby issues to protect. We need growing, we need a long-term testament for being. I'm also, we've got evidence that it's not going to go away until it's something, action, and that will take. It's not a cocktail. I've done a little research in the past few months. I know she'll be in town. I know we need more resources, grants out there. We would need more support. Could I guarantee right now, this buck that lost his son in a very crucial way, would do anything in the world to have more of their health accounted than a priest of law. That I know they cover bigger hair than fighting, than begging, than grugging, and all that. I don't want there. We don't need it. It's a pain you can't handle. Um. This doesn't have to happen. Suicide can be eradicated in my community, through education. I've spoken online, I've met and talked to probably 5200 doctors. The schools were educated, correct me if I'm wrong. Education is a thing to get rid of suicide. It's happened too much, one time. What have we done since a kid, four, five years ago, brought it down to school and had harmful addiction? I know it happened. What have we done since my son got his way back? What have we done to do what, what could we? Because God's not coming back. No kid, 100 and proud, God, it's not coming back. The pastor's not coming back, no kid, hundred and five, God, it's not coming back. It doesn't have to happen, though, to give him right, and talk about education.
One minute, Kyle.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um. I don't want a goddamn, I'll never know his will, and all this is happening, good, but if, for one week, I do not want a parent to do this thing. I'm gonna take up my cross, and I'm up there, and I'm gonna fight with anybody that's willing to fight, and hopefully the, the department, the agency, the district will allow me to assist John, whatever y'all gonna do. Pastor's Hope Foundation's already passed out seventy thousand five hundred dollars. And this is here, it's gonna be more, and it's gonna be here. I wanna take all those resources, or a percentage of them, come up with something, help Monica out, get a grant, do any, anything that, that we need to do, and then, the members of our foundation, they're all in this room here. It's nowhere near where it needs to be or where it's gonna be. I'm just asking y'all, let us be informed, whatever, I do, needs to be done. So I thank every, and any of the faiths, and what you're asking me to do, and we're thankful that this is, and then help me, suicide, baby, you can do that. Thank you, Kyle. Is that the only public comment that we have?
Okay. We have some recognitions that we.
Oh, yes, you're right. Alright, so we've got some recognitions today. Um, Mr. Klingerman, you want to come up? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Uh, sorry, if we're going further, I wanna take this opportunity to honor someone, who sat in the presence here on this floor, and is, and served us very well, over the course of the past year, and very proud of the work that she did for us, and the work that she will do, as a member of this board, moving forward. To that further ado, I'd like to call this man, P J R, and honor her for serving as our board president for the last.
And last, not least, we'll have each one of our principals just stand up and just say a little bit about Board Appreciation Month, and this is our opportunity to tell our board members how much we appreciate them, and the campus hours, the volunteer time that they put forth, uh, fighting all of the, the different fights, the work fighting here in this district, uh, make sure that our kids are provided for as time goes on. So, uh, without further ado, I'd like to start with M G S, and we'll.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all you do for us. Here's a cheer to show you our appreciation.
Thank you so much.
They help build stuff around the school.
It's the principal's boss.
A school board member puts out boards in the school.
A school, a school board member helps us build our school.
It helps the school.
What does a school board member do?
I don't know.
They teach.
A school board member do? Um, I would say, I guess, respect their teachers, I don't.
Respect their teachers.
Our broadcast, we have children that think that, and our students think that, and they could be coming up here. So we wanted to say thank you personally, and then, we have the idea to do, really, what a school. So we wanna see what they know, so those were, um, yes, you are my bosses, and yes, you can be teachers, you are welcome. I'm thinking, what other things they did, and the teacher was a lady, and my art teacher was a lady. I think our best is like, it didn't turn out how she thought, and it was a many heavens, look here, and I just today realized, it kind of is the same thing, cause these are some friends of every student.
Oh, that's awesome. That's awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Angie, you're up.
I'm up. And so, I wanna thank you so much, it was funny when we were talking to different groups about what to give to the school board, uh, it, it was interesting to get to know what some of them thought, like, one day I'm gonna be on the school board, so I can make as much money. I thought it was so interesting, so here, like, why do these school board members get paid, so you're talking to the students? And so, when I, when you get to tell them, like, the investment is, so for the kids to realize that. So it was interesting, cause some of their goals was, one day I wanna be a school board member, so I can make as much as they do. And then when I tell them, the investment is for you, the time you guys put in it, we know how much time you put into it, and the hours that you do. So, what our students wanted to do, you'll have different things here, that's one of them, from our art students, like, these are handmade, so you have some cards from there. We also have, y'all have a card from our dance team, they did a card for you guys. Uh, Miss Young's visual arts class, they did the Falcon buttons, didn't they? And, uh, you'll see, they, they donated some certain shirts for you. So, we do wanna thank you so much, the time that you give, and the investment in our students, does not go under this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Well, on behalf of all of us, thank y'all so much. Yeah, that, that's, that's awesome, having all that stuff is great, thank y'all. Um, I guess, before we finish the board president stuff, let's, um, let's go ahead and take our consent agenda. Uh, so, do we have a motion?
We do, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Alright, any questions? Alright, all in favor? All in favor? Alright, uh, jumping back into the, uh, president's report, um, I know we had, uh, at least one construction subcommittee meeting this past month, uh, we had one or two policy subcommittee meetings this past month, those were riveting. Um, any other stuff anybody wanna bring up, or anything in particular that went on, that I don't know about? Alright, that's our exciting month. Right there with me here. Did you have something?
We had, I think we had a policy subcommittee meeting too, I was in Dallas, but we did have one of those this month.
Alright, Benny, with the superintendent's report?
Yes.
Alright.
So we will start with our reports. Uh, A, Goal Three, which is provide district support and innovative practices to address instructional needs of all students by utilizing best practice delivery methods, additional district bilingual instruction, and a continued focus on student achievement. H I S D will emphasize remediation opportunities and support for students, as well as providing professional development for faculty and staff targeting effective instructional delivery. So, uh, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about Goal Three in the context of the B S C here in just a moment. Uh, so we'll, we'll get to that here shortly. Um, but before we move on to Goal Three, and the explanation of Goal Three in the context of the B S C, uh, Huffman I S D, B is Huffman I S D will implement technology to enhance student performance. Technology Director give report and campus information attached. Ms. Davis?
Good evening, how are y'all?
Good evening.
Good. Uh, we have some infrastructure upgrades I'd like to go over with you, and just some instructional updates that we've done for the past year. As we all know, students and teachers can't really do anything that they're here for without all the infrastructure being up to date. So, things that we've implemented, we've increased our internet bandwidth. We, um, implemented a core routing upgrade, I think, which we talked about last month over Thanksgiving break. Uh, we've upgraded the switches at H E S, H M S, and H H S. We've implemented redundant fiber connections to our campuses, which how, was kind of there, but just not implemented fully, so that if we get a fiber cut, we can reroute around, um, to, so we get access to that campus. We've migrated user files and shared drives to our storage area network. I know some of this is gonna be Greek for you guys. We've also moved some applications to a hosted environment, including Skyward and our time clock system. Some pro, projects that are in progress, as we're upgrading the district wireless, that will be this summer, replacing the network switching at F R E this summer. In progress is also replacing all the U P S's at every site, which will keep the equipment up and going when there's a power outage for about thirty or forty-five minutes. Um, so we have time to successfully shut down all of our equipment. Um, also a new camera system and access control with the bond. And on the instructional technology side, you know, we implemented B A R K for schools, which monitors all of our Google accounts, our student Google accounts, and to date, it's, um, alerted us of over fourteen hundred events, just the first semester, so, which is pretty good. That includes anything from bullying, to weapons, to harassment, to suicide, self-harm, things like that. Um, we've also implemented Intune, which is a Microsoft, a product that comes with our licensing, to help us better manage our Windows devices. Converted over to Jamp Schools for our Apple devices, which we were already on Jamp Pro. Jamp Schools is designed for schools, and it's less expensive. We've also included virtual training resources in Canvas, um, in our Canvas Technology Resource Course, and we continue to send out weekly tech tips for teachers and instructional technology campus support. And right now, we're actually working on a, um, with Crime Stoppers, to have Crime Stoppers come out and talk to our parents in March for cyber safety. Any questions?
I've got one.
Sure.
The, uh, so Dr. Perez was talking about, the star testing, doing it all on the computer now.
Yes.
The, uh, did that make any specific new requirements for us, technology-wise, or were we already covered?
We're already covered.
Okay.
Yeah, we're already covered, cause we've been doing online testing for a couple of years now.
Okay, gotcha.
So yeah, we're covered there.
Other questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Alright, number two, first semester attendance and enrollment, and third cycle attendance and enrollment as well. Dr. Nolte?
Good evening, you guys are on page thirty-nine. And this is another data point that we will talk about in B S C tonight a little bit, but you guys will wanna look through the breakdowns of each campus and get some historical data against that. Looking at the semester report first, you see ninety-three point eight-four for the semester, this is up over half a point from last year, where we were at this time, so that's good news. We had been hovering over ninety-four for the first two grading periods, but this segues, uh, well for me to the data point at the bottom, where you can see that's, uh, at the third six weeks, just over ninety-two. So that brings us down below ninety-four for, for a bit, but this ninety-two point one-seven is again, over a half a point over where we were last year at this time as well. So, not only are those two data points consistent, if you look at where our campuses were for the semester in reference to historical data, almost all of them were right around half a point above where we were last year. So we're consistently moving along in there, and as I'll talk about in the B S C, uh, cause our goal is ninety-four, uh, we'll probably be into, for a fight to the finish, to see if we can beat that goal, uh, with our attendance for the school year, ninety-three point eight. But our, uh, somehow our second semester attendance last year was better than our first, a little bit, so we're hoping that, uh, continues again this year, and we'll, we'll meet the goal of ninety-four percent. But, any, any questions about anything you see here on this page?
Dr. Nolte, the only question that I have that, um, I'd like to talk about just a moment, Ed, how much difference do you think our truancy officer is making in that regard?
So we're gonna, uh, again, talk about that in the B S C, cause we have the chronic absenteeism, and what we think we're seeing with, with that, is, cause the chronic absenteeism data piece, you guys have probably already seen it, cause I know you, you went through those, uh, those, those data pieces very closely. The chronic absenteeism number is up a little bit from where, for what our goal is, but what we think the difference that our truancy officer is making is the number of absences. A lot of those kids are accruing over time, where some of those kids were having thirty, and forty, and fifty absences. Those numbers have come down, but unfortunately, she's gaining a few more customers than maybe she had in the past few years, so that number is a little bit up. The number of kids that are over that ninety, or under, actually, that ninety percent, uh, tennis threshold is, is there for her to work with, but again, the kids that are having the big number of absences, that data piece is down for us. Is that, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, thank you.
Is, is there a chance that some of that is, now that we have this program, some that we might have just called dropouts before, now we're still continuing to focus on and try to bring them back, or is that not? Now we're still continuing to focus on and try to bring them back, or is that not a change?
So you're, just let me make sure you're saying that those kids maybe potentially would have been dropouts?
Like before, we would have just called them a dropout.
Oh, I think there is certainly a chance of that, yeah.
Okay, hey, we're trying to.
Now we have them in school and working with them there. And, and I, I would say what, what you're probably dealing with is just breaking a lot of habits with those students that we're trying to work through in the past. But we're better off having them in school and, and, and having them be part of the educational process. Uh, but, 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 yeah, we have to retrain them a little bit to, to stay in school and be a regular daily student.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Chief is going to report, uh, regarding Huffman ISD Police Department's twenty-twenty-three annual TECO report. Chief Williams.
As required by the state legislature, on an annual basis, we, uh, have to complete a TECO racial profiling report. Uh, I completed that report, submitted it to TECO and, as also required by the legislature. I filed a copy of that report with you, the governing, the local governing body. Uh, you may notice that, again, this year, I filed an ex, uh, an exemption. Uh, we did that because our officers, while they do work traffic from time to time, it's not a part of their average daily, uh, responsibility. And so, uh, that enables us to file that exemption.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, moving on. Uh, Deputy Superintendent, we, uh, will first, I think we're going to cover OnRamps, correct?
We will, and then Dr. Perez is going to come forward and give us a, a good solid presentation.
Yes.
And Dr. Perez, I believe that, uh, on the second piece after OnRamps will be the balance scorecard and we'll, uh, we'll talk about Goal Three.
We're, tag, you're in after that.
Very good.
All right, so in front of you, you have a copy of the PowerPoint that I'm going to be going over, as well as another one of those handy dandy flyers. So we'll start with the presentation. Um, really, really excited about this. And this is, um, very early stages exploring an opportunity, an opportunity to offer to the students of Huffman ISD. OnRamps, um, is a dual enrollment program, uh, in partnership with the University of Texas at Austin. Um, and it's been established now for over a decade and it is designed to prepare students for the demands of college and the workforce. And, um, we're really excited about the opportunities in, in OnRamps. I know currently, uh, in Huffman, we have AP courses and we have dual credit courses that we offer, uh, through partnership with Lee College. This would not replace what we are currently offering for the most part. Um, this is just another opportunity for students. And so, um, as you'll see, uh, the research shows that students who participate in dual credit courses, um, who enter college with some credit courses are twice as likely to complete in four years. And so, all of us here have either have children or my children are going to be getting to the secondary level. We want them to be as prepared as possible to be successful. And so, um, what is OnRamps? OnRamps is centered around, um, providing college standards for students. And this is following the college standards set forth by the University of Texas at Austin and their faculty. They utilize innovative pedagogy. It is technology-enhanced education. So there is, um, a hybrid, if you will, of virtual and in-person learning. And then we're providing them, uh, students, the aligned college experience. The beauty of OnRamps is it's a partnership where students will have access to a University of Texas professor as well as their teacher from Hargrave High School. And so on this slide, it's a really important slide since this reflects what we currently offer here in Huffman ISD. On the bottom two rows, you'll see dual credit where they have access to the curriculum, but it's provided by the teacher from Huffman ISD through Lee College. So they get the curriculum and the materials through Lee College, but there is the teacher from Huffman ISD that is providing that instruction. When we are taking advanced placement class, again, it's the teacher providing the content and material through, um, the AP materials that we receive from the college board. The difference with OnRamps is, again, they get access to the UT professor virtually and their teacher. And so, they are getting the best of both worlds. And so it really truly is a hybrid and they like to call it a dual enrollment versus dual credit. OnRamps is focused on solely providing courses in the core subject areas. So our students have an array of classes and selections they get through dual credit, which are outside of core. They get core and they have other electives they can take. OnRamps is solely focused on those core classes, uh, because it's really designed for students to earn credit in those core subjects that they would take upon entering the university. And so these are some examples of the courses that they include. OnRamps also includes the lab credit hour. So there are certain courses where they'll get the four credits because it includes the lab credit hour and the students will be able to select how they want to utilize that lab credit hour whenever they get to university. This is just the timeline of implementation. We're still in the early stages. Um, we've been, um, speaking with students at the high school. We actually spoke with students at the middle school. And I will be meeting with some of the staff members at the high school this week to really, um, talk about OnRamps and really clear up, um, anything that they, they need to know about it. But it's a pretty simple implementation plan. We get students enrolled and they get the benefit of taking the courses. Um, the teachers that, um, will be providing the courses will have some training in the summer through their partnership with University of Texas. Um, and then they'll be ready to go because it's an ongoing collaboration with that UT professor. There are only two, um, courses through OnRamps that are semester courses and those are not ones that we are planning on implementing year one, so not much that we want to look at there. Um, this is the timeline of just the courses. Students will have the choice in OnRamps, um, whether they want to use that, accept that credit at the college level. And this is something different from most dual credit programs. If they didn't do so hot on a class, but they passed and they don't necessarily want it reflected on their university transcript, they have a choice, um, to either accept or not accept that credit for the college. Enrollment requirements, uh, the students just have to fulfill the prerequisite classes. They don't have to meet TSI requirements. Um, there's also through the collaboration with the staff at UT, where they'll, uh, work with the teachers to providing accommodations and designing those. And so, it is inclusive of all students. The benefits to students, they are going to be taking a course, a rigorous course. Um, they're going to receive a University of Texas at Austin transcript. The transferability of these credit hours are incredibly high. Most colleges and universities across the United States will accept them. And the, the biggest benefit that's not in this PowerPoint is the price point. Um, at most, a student will pay a hundred and forty-nine dollars per course, um, with some being eligible to pay ninety dollars for a University of Texas at Austin course. And so, um, OnRamps has awarded ninety-two percent or ordered over eighty thousand semester credit hours in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year of the, in ninety-two of its, percent of its eligible students. So it's a really exciting, um, off, opportunity. And so, um, I am a, let's get the gist, so I made y'all a one, uh, one pager that kind of goes over, um, just the highlights of OnRamps. Now, um, there are a lot of classes that are offered through OnRamps, but we know that we're going to have to scale that up. And so, as we're exploring the possibility of offering courses through OnRamps, we've got to identify courses that we don't currently offer in the district. So it adds onto the menu of opportunities for our students. Um, and also make sure that we are doing the best we can to really bolster that enrollment and make sure that these classes, um, do have substantial enrollment because the students also need to work with one another as they navigate pretty challenging coursework. Uh, we are planning to implement this for our incoming freshman cohort and be on the lookout for other information items and possible discussions around how we can, um, incentivize this level of rigorous coursework for students. Any questions about OnRamps?
Uh, yeah. You'd mentioned, you'd mentioned one thing. You said, uh, well, in the, in the packet, no budgetary impact. Who, who does that?
The, the families, the families, just like they do for the dual credit courses. And actually, we heard recently from Lee College that we may be seeing an increase in the price per credit hour from Lee College. And so OnRamps is actually going to come in at a much, a more affordable price for the families.
And you talked about the teachers being assigned to the OnRamps. How does that work?
It won't be assigned. No, no, it, this is a, this is going to be a process where we have to make sure you have the right, you have to have a teacher who is willing. This is, this is as much of a, a load for the students as it is for the teacher. Uh, making sure that we identify the right teacher that's willing to take on this challenge and make sure that they're going to go through the process of training. And so, um, looking at also the courses, the actual courses we feel will best meet the needs of our students and that we, we feel confident that the students are going to want to enroll in. And then looking for those that are, um, have that level of content expertise. They do become, um, an associate, if you will, of the University of Texas and they have to go through a process, the teacher will, in order to be eligible to teach these courses.
That, that was my question. Does, so this doesn't help us with, do they still essentially have to be college professors?
No.
Okay, okay, good. But that always holds, ties our hands and stuff of like, I have a master's or a doctorate degree in physics and I'm teaching at a high school. Those are really hard to find.
Yep, this is beautiful. As long as they attend the Training Palooza that they call it in July, it's a two-day, uh, intense training. As long as they attend that, and then the training is ongoing because they're having check-ins weekly with that professor. And the professor will be communicating with the principal as well to make sure that that relationship and that collaboration is there. It even goes down to, this is what will be in the Huffman ISD grade book. This is what's going to be in the UT grade book. And then the students will have the opportunity to have a UT at Austin, um, transcript. We joked with some of the students at the Student Advisory Committee. Some of them, but I'm an Aggie. They're like, ah. But I'll tell you what, these, first of all, those students, that group was amazing and they were excited about the opportunity. They really were excited about OnRamps, a little jealous, uh, because we were talking about things we were trying to offer for the incoming freshmen. I spoke to the incoming freshmen. Some were really excited. Some were like, what do you mean, high school? But, um, we plan on having lots of informational meetings, talking to parents and really deciding when, if and when we do decide to implement, making sure that the rollout is there. We, we start small to go big in the long run.
So, the decision to roll this out for ninth graders next year has not been officially made?
There are things we have to consider and those things that we'll have to discuss with you all as well to make sure that when we do offer this, that it is something that is going to be incentivized for the students to want to take.
And as far as staff goes, um, current staff on campus, um, available to handle this load? Not any additional special staff that we need to?
Mm-mm, and that's where we've been talking about making sure the courses, we're going to make sure what, within the staff that we have and the expertise that we have within our staff, that's also going to drive how we pick our courses.
And, and my last question is, is if I understand correctly, um, your grade that you received from the University of Texas could be different than your grade you received from your high school teacher in this dual enrollment.
Yes.
So that becomes another policy issue when it comes to grade point average and class rank. We got to tackle that too, right?
That is absolutely the things we were talking about we're going to need to tackle. And so.
I can see, that's, that's where I see the big problem because we know those parents care and we know those kids care.
Yes.
When it comes to that class rank and, and, um, we need to make sure we have everything buttoned up there if we're going to do this.
Those are the buttons that we're going to be buttoning. We're just not at that, we're not at that part right now. And so we just wanted to make sure that we put the feelers out for the students in general about the opportunity. And then from there, we were like, okay, now we're ready to start talking about more detail. Um, and, uh, to the question about the difference in grade, when we met with the, the reps at OnRamps, that is a part of that collaboration between teacher and professor. And if there's too much of a variance, then the professor will intervene with campus administration and, or me.
You're talking about not adding OnRamp classes that, that necessarily clash with dual credit, but what about AP?
So.
Because I can see a lot of AP kids going, okay, that's something I might want to.
Yeah, so here's, here's a perfect example. Um, we currently have AP chemistry and we have advanced chemistry, but we don't have dual credit chemistry. Well, Chem One OnRamps would be a perfect opportunity to maybe push those students who would like to take that, go up. But to your point, there are some, some constraints with GPA that would maybe not have an AP student take that one.
With your, with your student advisory group, did you feel like more students would maybe do the, go the OnRamp route than, than decide to go AP chemistry? Like, if it was OnRamps, maybe we'll get a few more of those kids?
If it came in at a six point, they, they were very clear. They were like, six point oh, yes. Not six point oh, absolutely not. So that is why now having that feedback, we've got to go to the drawing board and really, really come up with some. But before we do, I want to make sure it's all buttoned up. And so that way, as we bring it to you all, you all have a clear understanding of the parameters of that.
Okay, thank you.
What about, what about incentives with the teacher? What's going to push them?
Personally, if I'm a teacher and I am passionate about my craft, what a great resume builder that I'm, I'm an associate with the University of Texas at Austin. Like, that's one thing. And we've already had some teachers express interest.
If I, if you don't like to be out with the cohort, so the connection is the college professor at the university, but you're also say it is, ends up being that chemistry class, that they're also with other chemistry teachers. Like, it creates a network there. Because a lot of them on the campus, we got one.
We have Singleton.
And they're figuring it out, you know, trying to connect. But here, it creates a Singleton with that. So they're also in a district or all around the state teaching it. So that cohort, you have more resources to go, oh, you've already been doing that two years and talking about those things, working with a professor in the school. So that cohort actually is a great resource and those teachers, they want them to talk to other ones that are teaching the same thing. Some of the AP and AP, there's, there's a number of persons that have been teaching, or teaching, and they'll teach a lot of.
And it's also a challenge to get kids to take AP tests.
Yep.
And that's, that's becoming more and more difficult as time goes on. So this offers us another, another way to get them there.
Yep.
Without having to really force them to take a test.
Yep. And, and one of the things is during the taper presentation, I talked to y'all a little bit about CCMR and how, you know, it's changing. And, um, with OnRamps, if you successfully complete one OnRamps course, you have earned your CCMR point. And that was another interesting conversation with the students. They were like, what do you mean? How do I know I have a point? I was like, well, you've taken an AP class, you've done this. Oh, you already have a point. But just knowing that we can give them opportunities that are just as rigorous, that will help them in the long run, get some credits if that's one way they want to go, um, this will, it's just another avenue, another opportunity. And really excited about it. So I told the, the class of eighth graders coming up, y'all are a part of a special group. And they're like, yeah, we are. So, but eventually they're really going to know what a great opportunity this is going to be for them.
I know there was a time we had talked about trying to maybe do something with Longstar or North Harris at the same time as the move going on with Lee and it was like a contractual issue.
Jurisdiction, like where we're zone.
Is there anything like that with this competing with the dual?
Mm-mm, whole separate. And then we're actually planning, um, some follow-up meetings with, uh, the reps in Ullman ISD. So the, uh, the people over academics, advanced academics to just kind of get, hey, how was implementation your first year? What were some hiccups, um, obstacles? How do we get more kids in those seats? And so we'll be, uh, following up with more information just to make sure we are designing a plan and implementation that is going to be as smooth as possible.
Is UT the only ones to do this?
Yeah, this way. But it's been great and it, we have enough surrounding districts that have implemented that we can learn from their experiences.
Other questions? Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perez.
Dr. Melton?
All right, guys, we're on page forty-seven. Going through tonight, one point one, one point two of BSC with our spring data pieces that you have there. So remember, uh, to, to make sure you were looking at the right data pieces. I'll work from the twenty-three, twenty-four column. That number at the top, let's look at attendance rate. So the goal for this year is ninety-four percent. That's the top number in the box. And then the bottom number in the box is actual, our actual data point as to where we are at this time. So I discussed this back on the, uh, semester attendance piece, ninety-three point eight at the semester. Ninety-four is the goal and we'll look to at a minimum duplicate. A better second semester attendance rate to have this, uh, to have this. at a minimum duplicate, a better second semester attendance rate to have this, to have this reach our goal, and have a green box here on the attendance rate. Moving to the next one, positive classroom environment walkthrough data. You guys know this is from our walkthrough form. We're tracking positive classroom environment observations that we have when we go into that. And we have a normally high score here, you guys can see from the historical data, goal is to be at ninety-seven, and currently we're running at ninety-eight, right where we were, ninety-eight point one, is what the data point that we had from, from going into ninety-eight percent of the classrooms. We see, we go in and see, we, we have evidence of positive classroom environment on those, on those walkthroughs. Okay, going down to drug and alcohol incidents per one thousand students. You guys see, last year, we were in a red on this, we had a goal of twelve, nineteen incidents per one thousand students. We revised our goal to sixteen, and we are right on schedule. And hopefully we can overcome the challenges that a spring semester presents and maintain this schedule and have a green box here. Below that, violent incidents per one thousand students, green box last year, we had a goal of sixteen, thirteen incidents. We revised our goal, and we've got some work to do the second semester. You see, we are out in front of ourselves a little bit. We know from looking at this data, what, what these incidents are. Unfortunately, it's, it's, it's fights. Unfortunately, we're gonna have to put in some plans and some, some, some efforts to, to reduce those. But this is, this is another helpful element of the BSC, where we're looking at data that we wouldn't usually routinely look at, maybe that doesn't jump out to us normally, but we see, and by tracking this data, we see that our number of fights are a little bit higher than where we want them to. So we can give intervention to this, or intercede in this, and, and put in some efforts in place to hopefully reduce this number as the school year continues. Any questions on 1.1 before I flip over and look at 1.2? You guys know, we've been through this before, the survey data goes at the end of the year. One, one new piece of information, we're gonna put the survey out next month, which will be different for us. We've done this in May in the past. We're on schedule to push this out at the end of next month and have that data a little bit earlier than we ha, we have had in the past. That's based on our discussions and observations for the best way to share this data. And we got the same from the teachers. We, we, we shared the survey, gave them a chance to look over and give us feedback last week at the DEIC meeting, and they agreed February at the end of the month was a good, good release point for us to give them that survey.
Remind me, Dr. Melton, the, the incidents, the drug and the violent stuff, those are, we're both talking specifically on campus?
That is correct. That is correct.
Thank you.
And what usually the things that go into this are gonna be assaults, fighting, and terroristic threat, are the three that, that usually contribute to this? Not that usually, that do contribute to this. Okay, 1.2, we discussed chronic absenteeism earlier. This was a new data piece for us. This replaced the, what do we have on here? Gun blank. Nonetheless, we like this data point better. Do you recall that at all? What the chronic absenteeism replaces? So, we set a goal off of last year's data piece, fourteen point six. We set the goal to thirteen, we're out a little bit in front of that right now. So this gives us, again, another good data piece for us to look at midsemester, and, and something we probably wouldn't have done in the past, and now we're, we're giving this attention. Dr. Perez and I worked on this last week, and she optimistically hypothesizes that this number will come down in the second semester. So we'll, we'll, we'll see how this goes. Total absences. Yes. Lone Star Cup, at the time we printed this, had not been published for the first go-around, and it has since then. We are not in the top twenty percent, we're, uh, top twenty, we're four points away from that. So we've got some, some work to do there to maintain a top twenty ranking, but as of, I think they put that out on Friday. So we've got some, some progress to make up in the second semester, which is completely doable for us with the success we have in the spring semester. So as of currently, we are, we're four points away from being in the top twenty. And percentage of students participating extracurricular activities, that'll be a survey instrument piece. So we're looking to increase that number, even though it was a red number last year. And then survey data at the bottom, again, will be part from the survey that we have. So, again, I can't say enough, I'm gonna repeat myself probably for the third time, it's just a healthy exercise for us to have this data, look at it, and, and build some action items off of some data that we routinely may not look at, but, but the BSC is providing that opportunity for us, or creating that opportunity for us, to look at some data and, and hopefully make some changes around our campus or put some pieces in place. So with that, off of 1.1 and 1.2, do we have any questions? Any comments or observations?
This might be a little bit off topic, but with the extracurricular things, did you have any thought about the OnRamp that we just talked about? Would that have any impact on this?
It should not.
Wouldn't be taking the place of-
No.
-extracurricular type classes?
It would not.
Athletics and that kinda stuff?
No. That's, your OnRamps, like she said, is gonna compete with your dual-credit classes and your AP classes. So should not have any impact on the extracurricular whatsoever.
Thank you.
Anything else on 1.1, 1.2? So next month, we'll be here in 1.3 and 1.4. Dr. Perez will have an extensive role in that, because you can see now what we're gonna be looking at here. She'll give BOY data and, oh, what's on the next page? We'll talk about certifications and colleges, some of the things you looked at from the TAPR tonight, but the, this will be more of a, of an update on academic pieces and some new measures that we put in place as well. Anything else, guys? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to our Chief Operations Officer and our operations report. Pass it over to Dr. Skinner.
So just, just a couple of things to point out. We'll talk more about it in a little while, but our Citizens Construction Oversight Committee met for the first time, had a really good meeting last Thursday, and Mr. Boyon, I'll go with that, spent time preparing for our freeze. Fortunately, we did pretty well on that, especially compared to talking to some of our neighboring districts. Manus did a good job of getting ahead of that and planning for that. We'd like to highlight our child nutrition, the training kitchen that we had to train our staff on. That is officially up and running. We've already had full, four days of training take place in there, and it's already, we're already getting huge benefits out of that. So just wanna say thank you to that. And then also, we did receive our TDA approval for our community summer feeding program, which is our summer feeding, the thirty days that we do in the month of June over at HES. So we, we have approval for that. There's a couple of the highlighted things, anything, questions I can answer on those?
Where's the training kitchen?
Training kitchen's over, that's Copeland, HIS, Copeland side. The, the bigger cafeteria.
Okay.
Uh, in, in the back of it, kinda by, by the stage here. Anything else for, appreciate questions? Okay.
Maybe in the bond report.
All right, bond reports, I'm gonna ask Mr. Boyon to come join me. I wanna speak quickly. So the Citizens Construction Oversight Committee, didn't meet, we have, we have thirteen total, we have Mr. Reynolds, our facilitator, and twelve members. One person wasn't able to make it, the other person was on their way and had a family emergency. So we did have ten members come. And Mr. Boyon did a great job of outlining our bond process, explained to them, you know, what all we've been doing since it passed, and then what that timeline looks like ahead of time moving forward. Have a really good group of, of individuals who cover a very well-rounded parts of the construction process. And so we had a great, great time, great visit, and look forward to our next few meetings coming up. So with that, I'm gonna let Mr. Boyon kinda talk about our architects and RFQs and kinda where we're at with that.
Today, requests for qualifications for architects started that last month. We collected those last Thursday. We had eleven, eleven? We have eleven responses. Today, with our admin committee and our construction subcommittee, we looked at those responses and narrowed it down to four that we wanna interview. We're targeting February thirteenth for interviews, and so we'll go through that process, and hopefully at the end of that, we'll have recommendations for you on February twenty-ninth at the next board meeting. We've still been continuing to, to go through and, and scoping the work and kinda aligning what was, what was put in, in the CAC with, you know, real-life expectations and, and needs and whatnot. Gonna continue to do that this week. We're gonna go visit the middle school later this week, as well as the Ag show. I'm excited to see this, I've heard a lot about it. And it looks like I'm gonna need my mud boots for this week, but, well, we're gonna go out there, see how the, the Ag barn is, is used during events, which will be good information for us when we're talking about how we're gonna expand that and look at Agmech and, and woodshop while we're out there. And, and also wanna continue to look at the traffic issues at the middle school. Those are obviously gonna be very important to, to fix and, and really wanna understand, you know, where all the pinch points are to see what we can do, once we get the architect on board.
And then the last part of our update, I'm gonna ask Ms. Raymer and Mr. Falters to come up and kinda give us an update on where we are as far as selling bonds and what that looks like moving forward.
President Vaughn, former President McGee, congratulations or condolences, I don't know, but happy to be here. Thank you, Board, for having us here this evening. We just wanted to give you a brief highlight of where we are in the process, along with Mr. Boyon. As you see, I've highlighted a couple of dates that'll, that'll be of importance for you guys. On December twenty-first, I didn't highlight that one, but we did get our PSA backing from the state. So these bonds will be, this first seller bonds for sure will be AAA rated, and we believe that next round will be as well, but we'll, we'll continue to work with Ms. Raymer on that. On January eighteenth, we had our rating call, we had a couple of calls ahead of that, planned for that. I think we had, thought we had a very productive rating call. Got great feedback from our raider that we worked with, our raider, raiter. So I feel like after the OnRamps, I need to give a whoop or something, but now I'm talking about tech. But we got great feedback from them. I think we'll at least maintain what we currently are, could even bump up a notch, but with that AAA rating, that'll override that. We've been seeing, if, if you're kinda keeping up with it, those ten-year treasuries, seeing some good movement on those the last three or four months. The bond market tends to follow those. Well, the Fed will meet again in February, and we think, I don't believe there'll be a, a hike there. And we're actually, for bonds that we're selling this month, we're actually running quite a bit lower. I mean, you have twenty to thirty basis points than what we projected. So we'll, we'll continue to keep you up, up to date on that. And then that rating will, will be released February ninth. And then, as you know, on the morning of February twenty-ninth, thanks for being flexible, I think that benefits the district to move to that Thursday, Mondays are just, the bond market is just, they don't know what to do on Monday morning. So I appreciate you being flexible to move that to Thursday, cause that'll give them a good feel about that week. And so we'll do that, we'll price those in the morning and then bring those to you that evening. Then you'll see that closing and funding on March nineteenth. And as you get your general contractors on board, you start to see cash flows from, you know, your managers and obviously Gantt charts, that sort of thing, we, we can start determining how you're gonna spend down those funds and, and start looking, you know, out ahead to the next sale, if we will. But, but for that, this, for this right here, I think we're on a good path. District came across really well in the ratings. Ms. Raymer, Dr. Swallow always, obviously do a great job representing you, have fantastic paperwork and documents that I think were impressive to the Moody's raider that we dealt with. So, all that being said, I think we're in a good place. Any questions?
I've got, I've got one.
Yes.
So is there, like, is there a chance that on the twenty-ninth, you say, hey, you know what, this wasn't a good day, we're gonna push it, or are we pretty well set?
Sure. I think we're in a, I think we're in a good spot right now, with that AAA rating. You know, there's capacity issues that, the IRS limits how much of the permanent school fund they will allow the state to use for backing. So we're locked in right now. That doesn't mean if, I don't, you know, if there's some kinda natural disaster, you know, national disaster, something like that comes on and we see a weird ticking rates, yeah, we can push those things off. Yeah. We'll be, we'll be set up, I think we have, we have a little bit of flexibility built into that daily schedule, we can kinda watch the market. And if we see that, man, things are skyrocketing, you know, we can, we can tap the brakes if we need to. But right now, I mean, obviously you got a lot of weather days between now and, you know, February twenty-ninth. I mean, you don't have February twenty-ninth every year, that's an inside joke, but, you know, that, that doesn't, that, see, teachers get that. But, you know, so, so we'll continue to monitor that. But, but right now, I think we're in a great place. Thanks for the question. Thank you, Dr. Swallow.
Thank you for being here, David. I appreciate it.
Anything else related to bond update that we can answer?
We're good, thank you.
All right. The next information item I have, we, we have several policy things later on for action, but this is an information item, Ms. Bailey and I have been working on. So if you turn the page behind the information sheet, you'll see policy DCB local. This is to be updated at the bottom where it says no certification required. So basically, if we hire someone for a position and give them a contract that doesn't require an S-spec certification, then we list them down here on, on the bottom. And so we bring this to you for information tonight, because we'll be changing this to make it accurate for the contracts that we bring in February moving on. And so we wanted to just make you aware of that, so that way you could, could see that. So that'll be an action item to match our contracts next month.
Thank you.
Hey there. So we're gonna start with the tax collection report on page sixty-one. Currently, we are, we have, we have collected forty-six percent of our taxes for the year compared to last year at fifty-one percent. Tax notices went out several weeks later because of the change in the homestead exemption, so we're expecting that. I am happy to see that it is just within a five percent, I was getting a little nervous there. But there's ten point two million remaining tax levy to be completed, or to be collected. Nine million of that is for the twenty-twenty-three taxes. And this is all through December thirty-first, and we have been collecting quite a bit in the month, month of January as well. Do you have any questions on that?
Nope, we're good, thank you.
All right. Moving on to the year-to-date statement of revenues and expenditures, we are fifty percent through the year as of December thirty-first. Revenues, we've collected fifty-nine percent of what was budgeted. And of the expenditures that have both been spent and encumbered, we are at seventy percent for the year. I did look at that, like I do every month, to see how much of that have we actually spent if you don't include the encumbrances in there, and it's closer to sixty-two percent. Now, the reason that that is, the reason that that number is skewed a little bit is because of the baseball softball fields and the portables, which, which we've talked about for the last few months. Removing those gets us closer to fifty-seven percent, so more in line with, with what we would expect to see. And in February, I anticipate bringing a budget amendment back to start lining a lot of this up. Preliminary, one thing I didn't mention in the, in the prior report is that the state is about to release their preliminary values. That's actually how we get a lot of our funding, or how we get our funding, is based on the state values that they decide if our tax, tax assessor is, is calculating these rates correctly. So we're about to get those in February, we're about to get a new template to, you know, rework all of those numbers for this year. So I anticipate bringing, bringing an amendment in February to kinda true all of that up. Moving on to our food service fund, again, fifty percent completed through the year. We've collected forty-five percent in revenues and we have expended forty-eight percent. You will see that we have expended more than we've actually received, but you would expect that, because the food service fund is one of those funds where we spend the money and then we draw it down later on. One thing that I did wanna mention, Mr. Russo notified us today that we were just notified, we will receive an additional ninety-five thousand dollars in supply chain assistant grants. So that'll be the fourth one, I believe, that we, we have received.
Good job.
Next, we have the quarterly investment report, which starts on page seventy-two. In total, there's two point seven million dollars that has been invested across the funds. Seventy-nine percent of those are in LSIP with twenty percent of that amount in treasury bills. One thing that I wanted to point out is this does not include the cash operating accounts. It truly is just the investment accounts. On page seventy-three, this summarizes our funds and our type of investments for our general operating, our debt service, and our food service fund. It lists, you'll see the ending balance, which is the book value. That's the amount that, that is in our general ledger, in our books. And then in the last column is the market value that's provided to us by the, by Longstar and Tech Pool. The next few pages, pages seventy-four through seventy-seven, just list out those investment accounts separately. It also adds in the activity fund, so you can see what that investment portfolio looks like there as well. Page seventy-eight is a schedule of our cash balances across general operating, payroll, debt service, and food service, currently at twelve point one million dollars as of December thirty-first across those four funds. Page seventy-nine is the schedule of interest revenue that we've received. Initially, sixty-two thousand dollars was budgeted in revenue for the year, but we've already received a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we're gonna want to do a budget amendment on that. And again, I'll bring that to you in February, so that we can, we can properly show the amount of revenue that we anticipate receiving for interest for the year. And then lastly, on page eighty is the comparison of market rates on, as of December thirty-first. It combines our LSIP account, which is the Longstar investment pool, against the T-bills and Tech Pool. And at that time, on December thirty-first, LSIP is the one that was actually getting us the better rate at that time. So these are just among all the different things that we invest in. Do y'all have any questions about the investment report? Sir?
Said, "Thank you for that detailed walk."
Yes, sir. The next page, let's see, we're, we're next moving on to the special revenue funds as of December thirty-first. This is showing where we are for the year. And in total, the grant award or the amount available to us for this fiscal year includes three point two million dollars, which the board approved for food service, four point one million dollars of other special revenues. Now, what that includes is two million dollars in stimulus funding from ESAR. So this is the last year, and that two million dollars will be going away at that, at that time. And then lastly, it also includes our debt service, which the board also approves in the amount of five point two million. And it's just listing out what we had budgeted or what the grant award was, what our revenues are to date, and then again, the expenses that we have, we have expended, we have spent. Yes, sir.
On the theme of money, are we getting any of that right now, or how much more today are we?
We have filed for it. We have some claims in there, and I have been gathering documentation. They've come back and asked us for additional documentation. And I actually was working on that today. So hopefully, we're gonna get some of those, those funds very soon. We should have everything now, and that should start coming in. Next, we have the year-to-date comparison to last year for the electricity budget. It is slightly up for the, for the first six months, but most of that was during the summer. It was down in November and December, and we're gonna continue to monitor that. I wanted to get you guys the usage on here. We were unable to do that due to some unforeseen things this last month, or not this last month, this last week. So I was not able to get those on here. But I want to start, start including the usage, so you can actually see. We can't control the cost so much, but, but the usage is what we can look at and monitor. So I'd like to add that amount in there upcoming, next time we discuss it. The next thing I'd like to talk about, did y'all have any questions about that? Okay. The last thing that I wanted to discuss is consideration. This is an information item. Nothing needs to be taken, no action needs to be taken tonight, but consideration to approve an incentive for early notice of employees for resignation or retirement. So qualified employees, as y'all know, are often in short supply, especially in the classroom. Oftentimes, we aren't notified until May or June that, that someone is leaving. So what we would like to do, so that we can properly plan for next year, is to offer up an incentive, and we're looking at up to a thousand dollars for up to twenty professional employees to notify us early. And what we're looking at is by March fifteenth, to notify us that they are not returning for next year, so that we can properly plan for next year. The, some of the stipulations for that would be, they would have to let us know by March fifteenth. It would be up to twenty employees. He or she would have to work through his or her last contracted day. And then payment would go out on June twenty-eighth, which is also in this fiscal year. But, but at the same time, everyone's work dates are completed. And then the budgetary consideration for that, since there would be up to twenty, up to one thousand dollars, it may be a cost to the district up to twenty thousand. As we receive those, we would bring those to you in a budget amendment. We feel like that cost, though, is gonna help us better prepare our classrooms for next year.
Any, any, any fear that that, you know, incentivizes somebody to leave as opposed to incentivizing them to let you know they're gonna leave? Is there any fear that that incentivizes somebody to leave as opposed to incentivizing them to let them know that they're gonna leave?
Yeah, I think that's what it is for employees who are already.
Contemplating where to. Yeah.
I think they create terror. And I feel like if you have any respect, that information, it helps us. You know, boy, we're rushing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Right. Guess we're still you. Right. Discussion items, all right. On page eighty-six, do we have a motion regarding the budget calendar?
Yes, I make a motion that the Board of Trustees adopt the budget calendar for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five fiscal year as presented.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Burt? Questions, discussion? Anything you want to tell us about this?
This is regarding to you every year and twenty-four budget workshops, as well as a budget hearing in June to adopt the budget. Some of the additional things that I've been hearing here for, for budget accounting or any places, or dates that I can give from either the state or PEA, just to kind of show why something may not match. For instance, we are receiving maximum press tax rate. PEA will obviously give, so that kind of dictates why we may not have that rate to do some of the taxes. So I would include those in here. The next couple of things that I wanted to mention, the next two things that are, that are up. We are likely to be receiving. That was from the state that I took earlier at the beginning of February. And then also coming out in February, March, we will be needing, we have the campus and departments to start reviewing preliminary revenue and expenses.
Any questions? All in favor? All in favor? Thank you. All right. Moving on to page eighty-seven, have a motion about policy adoption?
I make the motion that the Board adopt policy GKG local.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Burt?
Chaplain resolution. The option that the subcommittee and our policy review committee will vote is option two, which is to have a new policy in place before we do our chaplain resolution. So do you think that this, this policy actually warrants exactly what we should put in this policy? So it makes our practice a lot of policy.
Any questions? All in favor? All in favor? Thank you. All right, so moving on to page eighty-nine and the chaplain resolution. Have a motion?
Think I'm doing the right one? Y'all take me if I'm, um, hold on.
VC on your.
Yeah, but don't feel like that doesn't feel like it sounds right. I make a motion that the Board approve the resolution which affirms the practice of a district campus permitting a chaplain to provide support, services, and programs for students in accordance with the district's existing GKG local policy.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Burt? All right. Give us some details.
So again, if you look at the page behind that, that's the actual resolution itself, which has, you know, the, you know, allow chaplains, income, basic conductance. They have prices or some issues. But it will follow a new policy that you call us as a, um, one of the.
Any questions? All right, all in favor? All in favor? Thank you, sir. All right, moving to page ninety-one, has been update, DD.
Make the motion that the Board adopt the tax policy update one twenty-two.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Skinner, will you let us know what this is?
This is a Norman's update on this couple of legislation. Basically, there was about thirty policies that we reviewed in the subcommittee. I'll talk to the committee. Most, all of those were regular lines we all have.
At the policy review meeting, Dr. Skinner gave this to us way ahead of time. And so I can tell you, there's not nothing to be scared of. All right. All in favor? All in favor? Thank you. All right, and then with me, and last one here, all right. Page one thirteen, EE on the computer. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to recommend the Board approve the resolution regarding wage payments during emergency closings.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Burt? All right, Ms. Raymer, what we got here?
Yes, sir. This, this is due to the freeze that we had. We were closed on January sixteen, twenty twenty-four. In addition, students were allowed to leave two hours early. Several of them had, had five days to go. And it was starting to get bad outside. So this resolution is recommending a premium rate for those employees. In fact, our health staff, our salary staff are very effective. So that they can still get paid for this time. It also includes premium pay for the employees that needed to work on that day. To make sure that everything was up and running, there were no, anything like that.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor? All in favor? Thank you. All right. All right. Eight twenty-six, Board will now adjourn in the closed session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meeting Act, section five five one dot oh seven one, seven two, seven three, seven four, seven five, seven six, eight two, eight three, and eight four. We are resuming our board meeting. We're back from closed session. Do we have any motions?
Yes. Hold on. I make a motion that the Board ratify the resignation of Kristen Patterson.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right. Do we have any other motions from closed session?
Yes. I make a motion to employ Cody Scoggan on a one-year probationary one contract for the remainder of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion, questions? All in favor? All in favor? Any other motions from closed session? All right, thank you. And with that, at ten fifteen, we will end this session of the, or this meeting of the Board of Trustees, the husband and I, SD. Thank you, man.